Good evening. I'd like to call the March 2, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council to order. If you would like to join us, we're going to start with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and forgive us trespasses against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Today, we got a call from Delegate Chris Adams, and he's asking to amend a bill which you have in front of you. And, Mr. Holloway?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a work session to discuss an amendment to House Bill 795 instead of Bill 715.
Second.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Hurley, can you read the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There are 11 items on the consent agenda this evening. We have legislative minutes from February 16, 2021, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 pertaining to a letter of support for proposed change to the State Education Article on Budget/Reporting Requirements for the Wycomico County Board of Education, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on the discussion on the water and sewer study with George Miles and Bureau LLC, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on the discussion to appoint a Charter Review Committee as provided in Charter Section 1002(c), open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 pertaining to a letter of support for House Bill 72 on the County Board of Education's student transportation vehicles, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on a letter of support for a proposed change to Class B beer, wine, and liquor golf course license, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on the discussion on broadband technology, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on the capital improvement program for fiscal years 22-2026. This is with the Department of Recreation and Parks, open work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022-2026 with the Department of General Services, closed work session minutes from January 19, 2021 to consult with legal counsel, and closed work session minutes from January 19, 2021 on a personnel matter pertaining to an evaluation.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Hurley, it passes unanimously. Before we move on to the next part of the agenda, I do want to state that we have a council member that's joining us via Zoom because they feel they may be exposed to someone. So, he thought it would be best to stay at home, but he's attending the meeting via Zoom. So, welcome, Mr. Hastings. All right, this time, got a request for the Wycomico County Sheriff to do a proclamation. I think I saw him out in the hall.
Quick question, Mr. Dodd. How did this get on our agenda? It's not a county council issue.
Got a request from the sheriff.
Right.
Right. We get requests for proclamations all the time.
On the county council?
Yes, people ask for different things such as this.
I've never seen it before, but that's okay.
Yeah, Sheriff.
It's the first.
Can you join us? Evening.
I would like to take a few minutes to address members of the Wycomico County Council, those present in the council chambers here tonight, and to the many citizens of Wycomico County who are viewing tonight's meeting via live feed from the conference of your own home. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. In just a few minutes, I plan to introduce a proclamation, a proclamation that's been viewed by many as being way overdue and by others as being totally unnecessary. Next month will mark the 246th anniversary of the events of April 19, 1775. On that bloody and sacred day in American history, our patriot forefathers fought and stood up bravely and valiantly for their rights to keep and bear arms in the face of invading British oppression. Last year in 2020, Americans bought over 21 million guns in the United States of America, more than in any other single year in the past 20 years. That figure is up from 13.9 million guns that were sold in just 2019. Gun sales across the United States first jumped in the spring, driven by fears about the coronavirus pandemic, and they spiked even higher in the summer during massive civil unrest in this country. The increase in gun sales appears to be primarily driven by more purchases of handguns, though Americans are also buying more rifles and other long guns as well. Fears about lawlessness and government instability drove many people to purchase these firearms. According to data from the National Incident Criminal Background Check System, or NICS, 21 million background checks related to the sale of a firearm were conducted last year alone. That is a 60% increase over the previous year. Gun sales surged particularly among African-Americans and first-time gun buyers after providing free educational resources and tips on firearm safety and responsible storage for all new gun owners. I personally guided several first-time gun buyers right here in Wycomico County. I've personally gone to their homes. I have tutored them on how to properly handle, load, acquire a target, and discharge a firearm. It remains one of the many highlights during my tenure as sheriff here in the county to see the excitement of so many people in their first weeks of new gun ownership. I think that's awesome. The National Shooting Sports Foundation estimates that 40% of last year's new gun sales were for first-time gun buyers, totaling 8.4 million new gun owners in the United States in 2020 alone. That kind of growth validates the relevance and importance of our Second Amendment, but it also speaks to an increasing need for firearm safety education. As a community of firearm owners, we all have a responsibility to use, transport, and store firearms safely, and the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office is committed to getting this information in the hands of all our newest community members. The Second Amendment of our United States Constitution protects law-abiding citizens and lawful gun owners. Criminals will continue to circumvent the system illegally, obtaining firearms, and committing crimes with these firearms. This proclamation means nothing to them. I've not seen anything like it in my 37 years of policing, and certainly I've not seen anything like it in my 47 years of handling firearms. There's very little inventory right now. There are few guns to buy. They can't manufacture them fast enough. There is little ammunition to buy. They cannot produce it fast enough. To this day, there continue to be lines at the gun counters with empty shells by people simply ordering a firearm. So tonight, I'm introducing a proclamation. This is not a resolution. A proclamation is formally issued by me. A resolution can only be passed by council majority vote. Why proclamation? Quite simply, I was uncertain as to whether I had sufficient council support to successfully pass a resolution here tonight. By proclamation, I promise you, as a citizen of Wycomico County, I will do everything in my power as your elected sheriff to protect and preserve your constitutional, inalienable right to keep and bear arms. As an elected official, I understand that we all answer to our constituents. To each of my council members here tonight, I respect your decisions. I truly do. As sheriff, I have the distinct pleasure to represent everyone in this county, and I treasure this distinction. Regardless of your race, ethnicity, or gender, I represent you, I represent your families, and I represent your futures. It is my constitutional duty to protect you, and that's why tonight, I'm issuing the following Proclamation for a Second Amendment sanctuary. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees that the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed, and whereas the United States Supreme Court in District of Columbia versus Heller affirmed an individual's right to own and possess firearms for self-defense within the home or for other lawful purposes, and whereas the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus City of Chicago affirmed that the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution applies to the states through the due process clause of the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution, and whereas Wycomico County Sheriff Mike Lewis has taken an oath to defend and uphold the Constitution of the United States, and whereas Wycomico County Sheriff Michael A. Lewis desires to act in the best interest of the residents of the county and accordingly hereby expresses their sentiments with regard to this important and fundamental right. Now therefore, the undersigned Wycomico County Sheriff Lewis hereby declares Wycomico County has a Second Amendment sanctuary to protect the constitutional rights of its citizens and will not unconstitutionally infringe their rights to keep and bear arms, done this second day of March, 2021. I am your sheriff, Mike Lewis, and thank you all for allowing me to be here.
Sheriff Lewis, I got one quick question while you're up there.
Yes, sir.
The Sheriff of Wycomico County will enforce all laws of the state of Maryland.
That is correct, like I always have, sir. Absolutely.
All right, that's contradictory what you've said in the past.
It's not contradictory what I said tonight. What I have said in the past is I will not support a law that encroaches or infringes one's constitutional right to bear arms. When they further encroach or infringe and make it impossible for me to send deputies into harm's way, I will not send deputies into harm's way to encroach or infringe on one's Second Amendment right to bear arms. That's what I said. I said it would be impossible to pass a bill, one bill, in its original intent, and that bill did not pass. It was watered down with amendments, and I agreed to the way it was passed. But the way it was introduced initially, I could not have supported that bill. That's what I've said in the past.
Right, the state of Maryland can't pass any law that's not constitutional. States can't pass laws.
Yeah, yeah. It's okay.
I know if people laugh at that.
Sure.
Isn't that correct?
Sure.
Right. Your sheriff agrees with that. That's correct.
Yeah, that is correct.
Right, that's correct.
And it didn't pass.
Right, and that didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, that's something of that.
Absolutely. I've always enforced laws, and I will continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Hurley?
Next on the agenda, we have discussion with Secretary Ben Grumbles with the Maryland Department of Environment, and they are walking down the hallway as I speak, so they'll be here just a couple minutes.
Oh, they're down the hall? Okay.
That's funny.
Yeah? Secretary, you guys can sit up front, please.
Thank you.
And if you want, bring that mic closer to you.
Not really, but okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Ms. Hurley, you ready? Good evening and welcome. If you all would, introduce yourselves for the record.
Keep wearing the mask, yeah. My name is Ben Grumbles, and I'm the Secretary of the Environment, Maryland Department of the Environment.
Yes.
Noni Howell, I'm with Maryland Department of the Environment.
Okay, and now you have the floor.
I want to say thank you for allowing me to come visit, to listen, and to learn. I'm joined by one of the two experts in the state, honestly, around the country, Noni Howell, on-site waste systems, septic's, drain fields. I know that that is one of your big challenges.
Yes.
And I'm here to learn and listen about solutions to improve communication, coordination from the state level, not just MDE, but with the Maryland Department of Health. Use a combination of technology and regulatory flexibility to ensure that we make real progress on protecting public health and the environment, and ensure that the economy continues to move forward as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come and hear from you and take notes with Noni, Noni Howell, and get to work.
Does anybody have any questions for the secretary?
Sure, why not?
Mr. Davis, introduce yourself.
Councilman Ernest Davis, District 1. I've been approached by several homeowners about obtaining permits to get septic. I had one gentleman, he built a house, the health department came in and said, "You can't put it here. You have to put it here." He had to spend $6,000 to get a company come in to drill holes and test in his land to find a site for his property, and it was all said and done, the site was where they said it couldn't be. What they're running into is, I've had several contractors that put in septic's that say they put in for a septic system in Wycomico, it takes them forever to get it approved, they have to go through a lot of red tape, but they can go right across the county line, Worcester County, and have it done in two or three days. So what we're wanting to know is, are we playing by the same rules throughout the whole state, or does each county have different rules for different scenarios?
Couple things, and I'll turn to you, Noni. We have the same basic standards of protecting public health and the environment, which depends on location, suitability of the drain field, what technologies can be used to meet the public health and environmental safety standards. There is variation that's built into the process because every county has a health officer, and every site has some variation in terms of the uniqueness of the site. So, there's not a one-size-fits-all. There are standards that are uniform for basic public health and environmental protection throughout the state, but it does matter in terms of the regions, and also, we know that in some counties, more work is needed on our end and on the health officer, the state health department, to improve the coordination and communication. Noni, do you want to?
Which I'll echo, that's the same opinion I have. As far as from one county to the next, with a few variations, the regulations are all the same, and should be applied uniformly, no matter which county you're in. I think the communication issue might be what you're talking about is the issue, not so much the soil or the characteristics of the site, but it sounds like we need a little better communication between all parties.
So, whose ultimate decision is it in Wycomico County to decide that?
The authority from Maryland Department of the Environment is delegated to each county health officer for the most part. So in this case, in Wycomico, Maryland Department of the Environment has delegated the authority to the health officer here in Wycomico County, and the environmental health staff are the ones that work to implement that delegation agreement. If there is a difficult site or a site that they can't repair by conventional means, it gets a little more technical than that, but if it needs experimental-type systems, MDE will step in and help out the county with that process, and we oversee, as always, what the county's working on. So we're always involved with the health departments in every health department.
I think what the problem is, is that whoever's in charge or calling the shots, when they say, "Well, you can't do it this way," they're putting it on their homeowners or their contractors to find out why. So they're having to invest their money to show the health department that we can put it there, like I just described, and I don't think it should be that. I mean, these people are trained and certified. What these people are saying is, why aren't they coming out to the sites and saying, "This is why, and this is where you can?" But apparently, in Wycomico, that's not happening. And the homeowner, and we all know that we have slumping sales as far as construction in Wycomico, and if you talk to a lot of the contractors, their number one reason is because the health department is so strict and them putting in septic and wells and stuff. That's why we're losing a lot of homeowners, well, homes being built in Wycomico, they're go in other counties, or they're going into Delaware to build. And you can see, if you go right across the state line in Sussex County, Sussex County's booming because they don't have the restrictions, not saying the restriction, but they got cooperation with the health department or the people that's in charge of these septic systems.
I can't speak for Delaware, obviously, but I would say that a lot of this does boil down to communication. I haven't found a homeowner yet, but once you explain what we're looking for, what we need to have on a site to approve a septic system, that's not cooperative and willing to help figure out what works best on their property. So, it sounds like you're explaining a case where it was a little rigid as far as it had to be in this one particular location, and that sounds like something that we could work on the process with.
I've been approached by more than just that. I mean, there's a lot more instances, I'm quite sure, these guys have been approached by some people. I mean, it just comes simple, as to my neighbor, I'm gonna tell you, my neighbor, he wanted to put up a pole shed. We had three acres of land, clear land, and it was 40 by 60, and they made him draw up a diagram to give them three different sites, just in case his septic failed, where they can put his septic. I don't think that's his job. I think that's their job. They got a plot sitting up there, they can tell him, "Well, you can't put it here because if your septic failed, we have to put it here." But they made him do that. He had to hire somebody, he had to hire someone to come in and do that for him, to turn it in so they can approve it. To me, it seemed like they don't want to get out and do their job. They're making the homeowners and the contractors to do their job.
I wouldn't agree with that they don't want to do their job. I think that, again, I think it requires a little communication, both sides communicating of what they want, but I do believe that they're willing to work with, and every scenario I've had in dealing with the health department, they've been willing to work with it, but I think they need to be part of the solution here or the conversation.
Yeah.
Because I don't feel comfortable speaking for them.
Of course, they're gonna work with you because of who you are and your title, but we're having a problem with these contractors. They're the ones that need to work, they need to work with. They're gonna work with you, but they need to come and work with these guys. They're the ones that have a problem.
We work with all citizens, and I think that should be the same, whether it's from Maryland Department of the Environment or Maryland Department of Health. So I think that's the same message everybody should be saying to work with the residents in the community. And I think we tried a little outreach before, and I think maybe we need to re-circus surface around to that and do some more outreach here, because there seems to be a gap in communication.
Councilman, I just would say one of the first actions that we need to take, Maryland Department of the Environment, we're not the front-line decision-maker, but the first action we need to take is to get in the same room with the health department, to also communicate with the contractors, and try to iron out some of the wrinkles in the process here in Wycomico County. It's clear that this is not working as well as it should, and there's a lot at stake.
Yes.
Thank you.
It should be easier for the citizens, I believe.
I do want to say that the Coastal Association of Realtors had two separate meetings in the past year or two at the Civic Center, dealing with septic systems and contractors, and the room was packed twice, and there were employees there from the health department and some were state employees, but you were there, I think I remember you there.
Yeah, Ms. Howell attended those.
And as you saw, there was a lot of questions, a lot of concern, and we're still getting those phone calls from contractors.
Well, I just want to say, I appreciate the Realtors convening those types of town hall meetings, including MDE, including health department, to try to hear what the problems are and be reminded that this is, the status quo is not as good as it needs to be, and that we have more work to do. And I, Councilman Member McCain mentioned, reminded me that there's a town hall meeting day after tomorrow.
Yes.
Which I think will be a good forum for follow-up to your all's leadership and discussion here tonight.
And as far as the constituents, when they have a complaint, they always call us. So, we're very honored that you're here to listen to some of the concerns, and Mr. McCain, did you have a comment?
Or just a quick comment, and I appreciate the comment you just made, Secretary, regarding, you know, commitment to, you know, help work toward those solutions, and, you know, our housing stock's very aged in our county, and as a result of that, you know, and most of our building boom occurred in the 80s and 90s, so now these homes are, their septic systems are now 35, 40 years old. So we're starting to get just this onslaught of failing systems, and, you know, which is causing a lot of the problems. But, you know, I appreciate the fact, you know, I think that is part of the solution, is getting everybody in that same room, you know, the representation from MDE and our health department and our Coastal Association of Realtors to, you know, start working to some solutions and alternatives to, this is a problem that's getting bigger and bigger, and there's a lot of moving pieces to this puzzle, too. And, you know, the county, we're working on, you know, public, being able to provide public sewer in parts of our county, but obviously, that's gonna be a long range, it's gonna take time to accomplish that, but that will not reach all the vast rural parts of our county. You know, we're always going to have vast parts of our county that will never have a public solution. So, you know, working together to try to find some broader solutions, you know, I think is definitely the key.
Councilman Davis mentions Sussex County, and I must say that I went to Dover twice in the last three months on the east side and the west side for two different things, and I was shocked at how much development is going on in not only Sussex County, but Newcastle County and Kent. Dover is surrounded, they've expanded so much, and it makes me wonder, what are we doing wrong? Is it the septic system? Is it water and sewer?
Well, I'll put that perspective a little bit, because we did, I do an annual real estate presentation through our business every year, and we did it this past week. But in Sussex County, they built a little over 3,900 homes last year. Just in 2020 in Sussex County. In 19, it was about 3,200. Kent County, Delaware, which is very similar actually to Wycomico from a demographic standpoint, they built over 1,600 last year. In Wycomico, we built about 240, and that was the most we've built in the last decade. We just surpassed 200 a couple of years ago. You know, so we're building 200 to 240 homes a year, which for a county our size with, you know, almost 110,000 people, you know, I mean, that's not a, we're not, you're not even replacing your housing stock at that level. even replacing your housing stock at that level. But it's just, just to put it in comparison, you have some of the differences in Delaware versus Maryland in terms of growth. And I'm not saying that's all good. I mean, that kind of growth comes with issues, too, as far as infrastructure and so forth, but just to put it in comparison.
Do you have a number of well and private septics versus public sewer on that?
Yes. The majority of those new constructions have public sewer. I mean, a lot of those are, is occurring in the, because like I say, that's, you know, if you're outside of the municipalities and you're building, it's mostly individual custom homes in most cases, because we haven't done a major subdivision in the county in almost 15 years. You know, when I say major, something, you know, like, you know, 250 homes, a community-type development, whereas, and once again, I'll compare this, and it's not necessarily always fair comparing it like to Sussex, but it is next door to us. They'll do about 20 to 25 new communities in one year, and some of these, they got some communities that are selling more homes and building more homes in one community than we're doing in our whole county. So, once again, it's just for, just to put it kind of in perspective.
It makes you wonder what we're doing different. Mr. Holloway?
I think it's Nicole Ackley.
Ms. Ackley, did you have your hand up?
Hi, I'm Nicole Ackley. I represent District 2, which is the west side of the county, Whitehaven, Sharp Town. Ms. Howell, I appreciate, it's nice to see you. We had, we had an issue in Whitehaven, we've had ongoing issues with septics in Whitehaven, and whenever I got to meet with citizens, there seems to be a lot of players in the mix. And so, trying to figure out what is the problem. So, there are times, there's an independent inspector or contractor, there's the contractor for the septic, there's the homeowner, and then you get the Department of Environment involved, and it's like, okay, there's one more layer of going through to get approved. So, ultimately, who decides if a septic is failing and what the issues are? Because a contractor or inspector or an independent consultant may have one opinion as opposed to MDE, who has a different opinion. And this seems to be consistent in my district that I see, are just so many different players in the mix of it. And I have citizens that have had concerns with contractors or consultants. They've sent in concern requests, and I've probably sent in three or four of them. We still have never heard back. So, I guess, my question is, who's ultimately, who ultimately is making the decision whether they need a new septic, whether they need a repair, whether they need the innovative technology? Who ultimately makes that call?
Do you want to start on that one?
Sure, and I guess it depends on what, who's asking the question, frankly. Is it for a sale of a property? Is it because a property inspector was out there for a sale? That can be assessed by a property inspector to determine if a system's failing. Obviously, the health department can determine if one's failing, and so I guess there's a lot of parties that can make that determination. I haven't seen a conflict where someone said it's failing and then the MDE said it wasn't, but, you know, there's always something new.
I wouldn't say that there was a conflict, but it was a third-party vendor saying, "Your septic's not working." And so, my question then to the homeowner is, well, did you contact MDE first, or you just had someone come out and say it's failing?
Well, and I think, that's one big question that's never asked, is why is it failing? And because you're not gonna fix the problem, really, unless you determine why it happened. So, I think that's a huge responsibility for the health department, if no one else, and MDE, because you can't correct the problem until you really know why it failed. So, I do think it does require a little extra leg work. It's not, you know, standard answer every time. You've got to determine what's going on. But ultimately, a lot of people can assess a property and determine there's a failure. Ultimately, the health department would be the party I would go to, to assess the repair or what the next steps would be. And maybe the procedure, and there's a lot of legislation being proposed right now that may even change those procedures more, but maybe that's the first work group as far as what the procedures are and who the players are would be helpful.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Secretary Grumbles, thank you for being here tonight. I know you have a very busy schedule around this entire state of Maryland that keeps you busy, and Ms. Howell, we appreciate you being here as well. I've attended the community sessions that we did have at Civic Center. I think we've seen this to such a large degree, and I appreciate that you say you do recognize this. I think it was very important that we try to put this on the front burner, though, as something that demands immediate attention, because it isn't happening. I remember when I first ran for office, I was ready to talk about budgets and everything else, and 90% of the people I ran into were talking about how bad the system, the health system was, environmental health, where they couldn't get something built, or they couldn't get a septic system in. I was shocked, because I was new to it. We resolved that locally. We made some changes locally, and everything was, I think, worked out well, probably for about eight, nine, 10 years. We've fallen back into this same pattern again over the last, I'd say, four, five, six years. And it's everywhere. It's the owner, it's the developer, it's the installer, and these are very respectable people who are trying to work with a system, but they're finding that it's just beyond working. So, we would really appreciate if you tried to do this. I mean, and even in 2019, you know, under the Coastal Association of Realtors, Ms. Howell, they sent you the letter, and Mr. Grumbles, you replied, and we appreciated that. And that was 2019. That's about the same time we had about 200 people showing up. But we're in 2021, and, you know, sometimes you have to be very frank. Nothing seems to have changed since then. I know that we've just recently lost our environmental director within the last week or so. From what I understand, we may only have two site inspectors, one for the east side and one for the west, but it's creating a lot of inconsistencies where these people cannot feel as if they know where it's gonna go to next week. They file a form in September, they find out where is it, what is it? Well, it's gone to the state. Three months later, they're asking them for the same form that they filed in September. These are real issues. These aren't just people who want to complain. I think there's also concern that we're losing our local autonomy and that we'd like to have local inspectors and site inspectors who are familiar with the soils, et cetera, and familiar with the way that the inspections could or can be done with the local developers, builders, and installers. There's a huge feeling here that the only thing that this health department wants to do is install holding tanks or mounts. They have no interest on trying to get through the minutia of truly establishing, you know, a septic system at a reasonable cost for those individuals. So, I'm only sharing, just as everyone else did, what our concerns are with our constituents, and I would also repeat again what Mr. Davis said, Councilman Davis and President Dodd. There's plenty of, there's plenty of business in Sussex County. I have friends of mine who are developers, and one of them has said, "I will never build in Wycomico County again." And I think we should get those numbers. On one second note, a part of what I think we'll also discuss with you tonight is that the county, I think, desperately needs to look at a wastewater authority, our own stormwater or wastewater treatment authority. It's gonna take a huge amount of help from the state of Maryland. I don't think there's any way we can even begin to work the dynamics out locally. We have done a study on that with George Miles and Bureau. We're expecting to get the results back, hopefully within the next month or two. But just to keep that in mind, if you could, Mr. Secretary, we are certainly gonna need some type of help in coordination of any efforts that might, we might undertake. I'm certain that's why Sussex has the advantage over those of us here in the state of Maryland.
Councilman, I will certainly keep that in mind, and I will assure you that the septic challenge is on my front burner, and I look forward, with no need help, working to make a real difference in a positive direction.
That would be great. If you have the time, the Coastal Association, we'll get the link to you for the Coastal Association of Realtors meeting at 4:00 on Thursday, and that would be very beneficial. There are a lot of people that are gonna be participating in that process. And do as well, Ms. Howell. I think you may already have an invitation. No?
No, no.
We'll make sure you get that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get that to you. Thank you. Mr. Cannon, thank you. Mr. Holloway?
Thank you for being here. It's easy to go last, you know? I want to ditto everything every council member has said here, because they all get these calls. I represent District 5, which is the east side of Wycomico, northeast side, more or less, of Wycomico County. A lot of private septics, the private business my wife and I are in. We have the opportunity to go to homes before they sell their home a lot of times because we have purchases we make. And one of the things I be sure and tell these folks before they get ready to sell their home, get your septic inspected, because you don't know what kind of cost you're gonna incur. And I've heard some horror stories, you know, people's lived in their house 15, 20 years, septic works fine, inspector comes out, said, "Oh, no, your septic's bad." Well, wait a minute. Our septic's working fine. We have no problems with our septic. Well, home inspector says it's not working. Well, this is a question I have, and I'll give you an example. A lady, elderly lady, had her home inspector come out. She had a contract on her house. Home inspector said, "Your septic's bad. Okay, you're gonna have to put in a septic." She didn't buy into it. She called another home inspector. They came out, they said it was fine. So, I know these, I know why these home inspections are done. They're done for the bank loans, you know, they require them. But who trains or licenses these home inspectors to inspect septic systems? They, apparently, they, from what I've heard, and I've talked to a couple of them, you know, they buy a camera and, you know, they go out there and they look. Is there any training provided to these property inspectors? Are they licensed, have to be licensed to do this work?
Yeah, they have to take a course that's approved through MDE. The, when that legislation went through, there wasn't a clause to say upcoming CEUs or, so if, and I took the course 1989. I've been approved since 1989. So, obviously, somebody from 1989 took a different course than what the course is now. Right now, there's a few private, MALPA, Maryland Association of Wastewater Professionals, does a one-day training course. I think Deltech does a one-day training course. Once they take that course, they provide the approval to us that they've passed the class, and then we put them on a list of certified inspectors. So, some may do a more thorough inspection, and frankly, a lot of it is education. Some that fail it might not fail it for the appropriate reasons. I've been behind those situations where it was a small fix that could have been done versus calling the entire system a failure. Again, as I was explaining, you have to look at the source of what's really going on with the system, why it's failing, to assess, really, the damage that has been done, or is it something simple to fix?
So, they take a course in Delaware for doing inspections in Maryland?
We, yep. It's an approved course through MDE and Deltech. They have a very, we partner with anybody. Well, not anybody, but we partner with...
Well, we just had these conversations about Delaware not having anything to do with Maryland, so that's why I was kind of...
No, I don't want to speak to how they approve their septics, but Deltech has a very, a good course that they offer for training, so...
It's gotten to the point where most people now are calling a subcontractor in, somebody that refutes what the health department is actually telling them they have to do, and they come in and prove them wrong. I've had, I've had those examples brought to me. Okay, the health department says, "I need to do this." I hired a subcontract, a private firm to come in, get back with the health department. The health department says, "Oh, yeah, well, that will work." I think Mr. Davis kind of related to that. So, what's, you know, that's the point where why do people need to have to hire a subcontractor to do something that the state, that they're paying the state to do?
And I think prove them wrong is a little too simplified of a term. Maybe they've looked for different technology. There's a whole collection of systems, a whole toolbox that we can utilize to repair systems. You know, I've personally worked on properties in Wycomico that trying to assess a property in respect to where a well is located, and the property owner says, "I'll abandon that well, I'll change." Well, I didn't want to put them in that category, so now the picture's changed a little bit. So, I think, again, communication I'm an advocate for, I believe, will correct the problem, and I don't think the property owner should be caught as the ping-pong ball, if you will, in this scenario. I think we do need to have some better dialogue.
That's what's happening. I guess, what's it been, like, four or five years since MDE got more heavily involved in Wycomico County Environmental Health Department, something like that?
We were here for a year. Two years ago is when we weren't here every day, but before that, we spent a year here working on training and also overseeing all permits that were issued.
Mm-hmm.
And tracking, helping to track permits.
Well, it's my understanding, and John just made the comment about one person for one side of the county and one for the other, is that would it be helpful if MDE came back with some health officers that would, or employees, I can call them officers, that would step in now and try to get Wycomico County caught up? Because I'm hearing people saying, you know, they're putting applications in and waiting for months. And I was talking to a guy the other day, said he's been waiting three months to get anybody to even call him back to try to get a perk done.
Well, you have my boss sitting here, so he'll tell me, too, I'm sure.
You know, this is, we're on the front lines here of, you know, one time here about four or five years ago, I had a complaint. I called someone at the health department. They really helped out, and they try to help, don't get me wrong, but I understand what it's like when you're shorthanded. And unfortunately, this person that we helped, you know, get things squared away, told everybody, "Call Joe." And so, suddenly, I started getting...
Can I get your number?
Yes, suddenly, I started getting these calls. "I heard you can help me out. Look, I'm gonna put you in touch with the health officer, that's the only one that can help you." But it seems to me, and I think I talked to, I can't remember her name, I talked over there, she said there were like four employees, four inspectors down right now in Wycomico County?
I don't know the current employee count, but I, you know, there's some ways to improve the process. I will fully admit that from our end even, but I'm willing to do that and work with that.
I mean, we don't feel like calling in the troops. I'm not, they might not welcome that, but, you know, there's people, there was a Realtor telling me, he's got four contracts being held up right now because they can't get approval for septics on homes, that's, you know, resale of homes, so...
I want that to be the message.
I'm hearing everything these folks are hearing, and, you know, those others, but this property inspection situation, there seems to be a, there's miscommunications on that as far as how the inspection's done and what's needed, you know? I think there needs to be a more uniform policy out there for that.
Message received and appreciated, and we will work on that with our partners to get more...
Uniformity.
Uniformity and improve the process for the inspections.
And, Noni, you mentioned communication several times, and Mr. Holloway just said miscommunication. I'm wondering, is there some sort of a appeal process? Because we're getting a lot of complaints, and a lot of these contractors know right from wrong and don't agree. So, do they have an appeal process when they're told that they have to dig somewhere else or their septic systems are failing?
Well, an appeal process is a legal process, legal term, and that's based on a denial that everybody has an appeal to that decision. I think the better part of it is if they have better means or a different proposal, everybody's willing to look at any proposed system that's out there. I do feel like sometimes property owners get taken down from a rabbit hole that there's no return from, and I discourage that because that's to the angst and the, usually, the cost of the private property owner, which I don't think that's a wise method. So, I do think, and I think, oh, Mr. McCann and I spoke about, years ago, I used to do what I would call just a search or seek, where you just go out and explore a property. Maybe that's something we need to consider here to get somebody on the right path of where you are proposing a system, you know, where you just scout around and see where the best area is on the property without giving a formal plan, such as what Mr. Davis or Councilman Davis was referring to.
And that's where I was thinking, because we're the appeal process, is they always contact us when...
Oh.
They don't get the answer they want to hear.
I thought I was the...
That's one of the reasons that you're here, to explain your position, and you've heard from everyone except Mr. Hastings. Mr. Hastings, do you have any comments?
He's on Zoom.
Oh.
Yeah.
He's the one on the screen.
I was looking for him.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. If you can hear...
Yeah, I can hear you, if you can hear me. So one other question, though, I just wanted to get attention to, was that of, probably the one that we've heard the most about the last two years, and that's the dissolved air flotation, the DAF tank issue, that is, and I'm not, I don't want to speak on any particular ongoing legislative, ongoing litigation or current project, but dissolved air flotation, as you all know, I think this is a, this is an agricultural use, we have a very large tank that's been put up more recently, and that got a lot of the folks' attention, and has millions of gallons that it holds, but there's a bigger, a lot of folks, I guess, in the, in the communities that surround this are really concerned about this particular tank that holds, you know, for, for lack of a better word, agricultural sludge or other type material. From that, when it comes to, I guess, I guess where we would need help from the state is, this is at the intersection of public health and agriculture. And of course, all of us on this council support, you know, our farmers, and, and I want to make sure that they have the best ability to use the right nutrients on their land, but this is an issue that we've, we've heard from constituents with, with folks who have been complaining about mosquitoes breeding in this open-air tank, there's, you know, of course, the smell, and there's other, there's a lot of other traffic issues and other kind of things. I guess this is more of a comment, and, but I'd open it up for any of your, any of your thoughts, but I think we would really need help in trying to figure out how best to make sure that if these tanks do continue to be approved, then how best to have them fit within our community. And I know that's an issue of planning and a local issue, but, you know, there's also a lot of other environmental health issues, and a lot of constituents, I mean hundreds of constituents have reached out and brought this up as an issue, so I'll bring it back to you, thank you.
Did you understand what he was saying? Sorry about the audio, we got it turned up a little bit.
Yes, I did, thank you, council member. I, I, I did understand, and I am aware of, of the issue, I'm aware of the passion and strong views of neighbors and, and others with, of views about, from right to farm to nuisance, to state and local roles and zoning, and I'm aware of it, and I would say that one basic component is to always start with what are the laws that are out there meant to protect public health and the environment, and who, is it at the state level, or at the local level, or the zoning level? Counties have broad authority for zoning certain types of activities. I've spent time with the Maryland Department of Agriculture and with MDE legal team. We, I certainly have heard, I recognize the concerns about the, the nature of the, the tank, the size of it, the multiple sources and, and applications involving multiple states. And a couple of things that come to mind are, one, is there a role of the state in the application of the residuals, the agricultural quote-unquote sludge? And Maryland Department of Agriculture and their state soil scientists have looked at that, about, you know, is it, is it a, something that is to be applied to the land, a soil amendment? And they've made a decision on that. There's also the very important question that you're bringing up, and that is the, the actual tank itself, the open-air aspect of it, the, the type of material that goes into it. And from an MDE perspective, we do not have a role under current law in the permitting of that tank, the facility, other than the construction of it in terms of stormwater and recognizing as well that there's also a question about transportation that a lot of neighbors and individuals have brought up, and I'm not aware of a role for MDE in that. But at the state level, from the Department of the Environment's perspective, I can tell you, we are aware of concerns and have looked at what laws and authorities we have, but has, have also looked at the fact that it currently, the material is an agricultural material that's used as a soil amendment, and that the county has quite broad authority on zoning to step in in situations where there's real concern about the impacts on citizens and neighbors.
Well, and Secretary Grumbles, you said, is there a role in the state or for the state with the sludge application? And I don't know if that was a statement, or were you saying that you don't know if there is a role with the application of this sludge?
No, I was saying that if it's a soil amendment, then it's not a biosolid, as in a wastewater treatment plant biosolid, which we regulate under the Clean Water Act and the state authorities, it's more of an agricultural soil amendment, and therefore it's, it's more for the Department of Agriculture, once they do that. And so we have not been involved in it as a, as a municipal sewage sludge land application or an industrial waste land application, because it was deemed to be, you know, part of the agricultural provisions of state law.
In fact, I'm glad you just used that term.
Right.
Industrial waste, because that's maybe where the state might be able to help in terms if there was some kind of consistent definition of what DAF actually is, because it seems like from county to county, some counties have looked at this as an industrial waste product, and some have sort of taken a position, well, this is an agricultural product, and then, and then thus treated it differently if there was, and, and I don't know the answer to that, but if, I don't know if that's something the state, you know, component that they maybe can deal with is to define what this is, because it's not produced, this isn't produced on the farms. You know, it's a byproduct of really industrial processes, and, you know, then applied as an agricultural amendment to our, to the fields. But the end of the day, the root, the root of it is, is this an industrial waste, or is this agricultural waste? I mean, it certainly makes a big difference as what path it goes from there.
Mr. Holloway?
Thank you, Bill, good comments. You know, we can, we can tell who, what country we came from, our ancestors came from, from 200 years ago with DNA. Is there ever, and I understand there's testing done on this DAF material like once a year? Is that correct? Is that your department that does that, or?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that we are, we look at DAF if it's a, if it's something that's part of a wastewater treatment plant, but I don't know who does the testing specifically on that, if it's a, if it's a state department or agency.
The, the question of whether it's actual agricultural products that come from a processing plant, then I would consider that agricultural, if it comes from a poultry processing plant. But there's been accusations made that a lot of this stuff is not from poultry plants. And I was wondering if, you know, who tests that to find out if that's true or not? Because, you know, there is accusations that this is product other than coming from a poultry plant. Also, there's a lot of chemicals, I guess, used in poultry plants to clean poultry plants, disinfect them, that gets into this waste, too. Is that, is that considered a by, ag byproduct, once it's sprayed into poultry plants? So I think there's some concerns, you know, from people of actually what is going on the land. You know, I've heard from farmers that use it, say, hey, it's a great amendment, it works, works great. But the opponents, the folks that it's, you know, affecting, has these questions, and I think that's a health issue that should be able to be answered, to find out just exactly what is this product? Is it, is it poultry? You know, is it something coming from somewhere else?
So where do we get the answer? Is it environmental or agriculture?
Well, right now, it's an agricultural soil amendment. In terms of the question of what is it going into the tank, I think that's something that we can, we can get back to you and, and look at. It may fall under the agricultural exemptions from, in terms of our environmental laws.
Right. And I appreciate you doing that, such as Councilman Hastings stated, hundreds of citizens around that area have contacted us, and I'm surprised they're not here, they may be down in the lobby, but they've been here and speaking quite extensively, so just be glad they're not here. Thank you for listening to us.
We got one here.
Do we have any more comments for the secretary?
One final, to reiterate on the, what is your understanding with all of your vast experience of the, of what Wycomico County may have ahead of it in regard to trying to establish a wastewater treatment authority? You know, Worcester County has, has that, that type of a system in place, Somerset does to a certain degree, I'm just wondering if you are aware of where we are in our position and what, what road lie ahead of us?
I, I would like to learn more about where you are in the process. I, and I wouldn't call it my vast experience, but in my years of working in water and environmental policy, when the political leaders of an org, of a county are focused on the need for an authority to improve a more holistic approach to wastewater or stormwater, that's a good thing, and it takes some time, and it sometimes is more than a legal issue, it's a policy issue. But I would love to get back to you, to the council, on the steps that are involved in that, and I, and I know that within MDE, we have a few experts in authority governance and the Assistant Attorney General who, who worked for us to help lay out the legal roadmap on that, to, to help you as well. I very much would go forward to getting back to you in the next, within the week on specifically where you are, and I, and I myself have to learn where you all are in the process.
Make sure that you get a copy of the report when it's finished, and that way.
Absolutely.
And within a week, we, we appreciate it, but you may want to wait until you get the report, that'll give you a broader picture of where we are, where we're trying to head.
Very good, very good.
Love to hear from you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and then like Mr. Cannon stated, I think it was April that they gave us the date that they would be back, the, the consultants, so we should have a clearer answer then. Mr. Holloway?
I have one, one short question. You know, on the east side, we call it the Ocean City Corridor, Ocean City Road Corridor close to Salisbury, there's a number of failing systems. People are not able to put in their septic systems, they're having to put in tanks. And I know back in the 60s and 70s, we had two small towns, Pittsville and Willards, were having those issues with failing septics and, and well-water problems, and I'll, I'll say the government, I don't know which government it was, federal or state stepped in and demanded that they put in water and sewer. So at what point, at what point does the state, or does the state ever say, okay, you've got a problem here in this corridor, you've got to do something?
Well, when we have clear evidence that it's going to become a public health, environmental issue, then that prompts us to step in and say, you need to connect. Right now, I can tell you that when the governor pushed forward reforms on the BAT system regulations, also with that was a commitment on the part of MDE to provide more incentives, more funding for addressing failing systems, and to provide a higher point scoring for priority wastewater hookups for connecting sep, failing septics to wastewater systems, particularly in areas that, that are, that have threatened or, or impending threatened water impairments, groundwater or surface water.
And in that particular area, I know I spoke with the gentleman from GMB about the plan for it, but the easier connection is to, to the city of Salisbury, but there's their county, and this is the city. But I do think there's a need there, and that's a relatively simple fix, and through the Bay Restoration Fund, we have funding available, I just think, again, a little work group to iron out some of the issues might help.
It may not always be simple, but it's, from a policy standpoint, MDE's approach is provide incentives and give extra points for projects that involve hookups to sewer systems, particularly where there are failing septics or bay or coastal bays at risk.
Thank you. I do have one question, did you have a question? Go ahead.
I mean, this is, this is to speak of the DAF product and the septics and wells. When a citizen has a concern or a question, is there an ombudsman that you have that they can contact that, so like you said, they're not going down a rabbit hole?
Mm-hmm. We do have within our department some portals for citizens to hopefully get immediate response or actions. I've got within the office of the secretary, some staff who are, and ombuds for specific types of projects, if it involves energy, or if it involves water and sewer or wetlands, yes.
All right. Is that it? Thank you. Mr. Hastings, did you have another comment? You look like you're biting at the bit.
Sorry about that one. One last bit, I'm starting to hear from folks about polyfluoralkyl substances, the PFAs or forever chemicals, and I know that doesn't really seem like that's on the top of everyone's agenda, but as you know, that causes everything from kidney to pancreatic cancer, to miscarriages and endocrine disruptors, et cetera. Long story made short, we're starting to hear from our, well, some of my family, and then I know who are watering, and then I know others who I've continued to hear about it, who are highly concerned that these chemicals are showing up in Chesapeake Bay or, or, you know, our rivers here, and that they're showing up in our crabs and in our seafood and our commercial industry. So there's a quiet, highly uncomfortable tension, I think, if I characterize it as that way, among folks who basically think that, you know, that these chemicals are going to continue to shut down the eastern shores, one of its best assets. And I know you all have done work on that in the past, and I know it's not as easy as banning these chemicals which are found in everything from cookware to firefighting foam to you name it, but if there's anything you want to say on, on that, feel free to, but I just want to let you know that I'm starting to hear more and more people being aware of that, and then being scared that, that one day, we won't be able to have seafood from the Chesapeake Bay. Thank you.
Well, I want to say to every member of the council that this is a real issue. It's a, an emerging contaminant of concern, and over the last decade, there's been more and more scientific information that these so-called forever chemicals, per and polyfluoralkyl substances, the two most well-known are PFOS and PFOA, and they're part of a couple thousand different compounds that are called PFAS, PFAS forever chemicals. And the reality is, is that the state of Maryland is putting an emphasis on understanding the risk, communicating the risk, and managing the risk. And the risk is real, but we also have other priorities and focuses as we gather more information on this. So we, we have established a, a task force on PFAS to work with federal agencies, scientific agencies, universities, and other states that have really been at the forefront because they had manufacturers of some of those flame retardant or fire retardant foams and materials that have these stain-resistant, water-resistant chemicals in them. And we're putting a real emphasis on that, and we are also putting an emphasis on testing and. also putting an emphasis on testing at drinking water facilities. We did a pilot project testing oysters in a specific area of the state. We are very focused on gathering more information, looking at biosolids for the presence of these chemicals, and then being able to gauge how much of a risk are they. The 70 part per trillion health advisory. So it's very small amounts of these chemicals that are the current health advisory. So there's a lot going on, on the scientific front. What we need to do is to communicate to policy leaders like you that this is an emerging concern, that we need to get on top of it, understand it, and look for ways to reduce the amount of PFAS in certain types of firefighting foam, look for other types of ingredients of foam for these important public purposes, or materials that don't have these chemicals in them. And we're committed to doing that. There is, it does get pretty controversial pretty quickly because there are proposals to ban certain substances. And, and so it's important to look at what those substances are, what mechanisms there are to move quickly to alternative substances, alternative chemicals for products that have been in everyday life for all of us, from the no-stick Teflon pans to the water-resistant parkas and raincoats over the last 30 years, to learn more about that. And I can tell, I can tell all of you that this is one of the priorities at the national level, that the state of Maryland is absolutely taking seriously, getting as much information as we can so that whatever is done is done thoughtfully, and includes risk communication, so that policy leaders understand it's a manageable risk. If we take actions, let people know, ensure that manufacturers are moving towards safer alternative chemicals, and, and also come up with standards and criteria to gauge whether or not it should be a hazardous substance under our waste super fund laws, and to set a standard for drinking water that's safe. This is, all of you are going to hear more and more about it, and Maryland is no different from other states. We don't have a lot of manufacturers of, we don't have the manufacturers in the state like, like some other states did, who, who made products that had a lot of PFAS in them. But it does, it's a forever chemical that does last and get into the water, the soil, a lot of waste sites. So thanks for bringing that up, and I appreciate your attention to the subject. It's one that we need to continue to focus on and increase our understanding of how best to respond to it.
I appreciate your response. Do we have any more questions? Well, Secretary Grumwells, Noni, I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule and meeting with us. I know we had you here scheduled before, but it was snowed out because ice, and you did the right, you made the right decision not coming that night. But we do appreciate you being here. And I want to echo Mr. Cannon's passion on water and sewer. All of us campaigned on and promised water and sewer countywide. We have areas that hooking up to a municipal water supply or sewage system is not an option. So we desperately need to find an option for countywide water and sewer. So we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, thank you.
So thank you again, and please have a safe trip.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms., Ms. Harley?
Is that all? Next on the agenda is the submission of an appointee to the 2021 Wycomico County Charter Review Committee. Per Charter Section 1002, the county council shall at least once every 10 years appoint a charter review committee for the purpose of reviewing the charter in full and submitting recommendations to the county council. The county council issued a news release on January the 21st, 2021, seeking resumes and a statement of interest from individuals interested on serving on the charter review committee by February the 15th. Council received a total of 44 resumes, which it then selected 14 individuals to serve on the committee as members and eight individuals to serve as alternate members. The Acton County Executive also submitted a nominee to serve on the committee. Resolution number 22-2021 is appointing the 2021 Charter Review Committee.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-2021?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Aye.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 22-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 22-2021 pass unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Thanks for your consideration. It's Resolution Number 23-2021. This is to increase the 911 fee to a dollar per telephone number on July the 1st, 2021 pursuant to Maryland Code Public Safety Article Section 1-311 to cover the increased cost of operating the Wycomico County 911 system. And we do have Mrs. Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, and Mr. David Shipley, Director of Emergency Services, if there are any questions.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-2021?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this, and I'll tell you why. It's, it's about a 33% increase. The 911 system has been funded in our budget over the years. So even though the state has allowed this, this be increased, I feel like it's just reaching further into people's pockets. I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but I know that they'll be back next year wanting more. We've been told that. So anyway, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna vote for this.
Any more discussion? All right. I've given this a lot of thought, too, and I think it's not the right time to ask for a tax increase, and it is a tax. We call it a fee, but it is a tax. We've got Kerwin that we don't know what we're going to have to spend on that. We've got legislation going through for a tax abatement, and it seems like the citizens are going to have to pay the difference. I don't know if it's fair at this time, so I think I'm going to oppose it as well. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Opposed.
Nay. Ms. Harley, it passes with two nays.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hitchens?
Good evening. I call your attention to Resolution 24-2021, accepting the audit report on the Wycomico County Civic Center Events Revenue Study.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-2021?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion?
If I may, I'll just give you a quick, very quick overview of the report.
Go right ahead.
This project focused, focused on understanding the accounting, contractual arrangements, and profit and loss for events at, at the civic center. The civic center is probably best known for entertainment type events where promoters come in and tickets are sold to fill the arena. However, those events only account for about 10% of the happenings there. The civic center hosted over 360 events in fiscal year 19, and most of those events did not require advertising. You can, entertainment events, on the other hand, while they're only about 10% of the events, they accounted for about one-third of the net revenue. On a frequent basis, the civic center is used by citizens and community organizations for private events. If you think about like corporate, corporations having meetings, nonprofits, weddings, graduations, and even church events. In fiscal year 19, the civic center did receive enter fund transfers of about 950,000, which means they were operating at a loss. So I looked into other regional convention centers that were similar size to us, and found that one received over a million as far as transfers, and the other received about a million and a half. So pretty much on par with those others. Of course, COVID-19 has been detrimental to the civic center's operations, which is why I focused on fiscal year 19 opposed to fiscal year 20, so I had a full year of data to go off of. The civic center has been operating mostly as a community center throughout this year, opposed, as opposed to like an entertainment venue. Unfortunately, even if entertainment options were available, promoters were willing to come in. State mandates severely restrict the viability of holding such events to 100 people, which makes them not cost effective. I did make, give two recommendations to the civic center. Once normal begins again, one was that they put on more trade shows. Trade shows are very profitable compared to the other types of events, and they don't rely on any concessions, so the revenue is stable. The other recommendation is to use their extensive email list to solicit ideas for customers. Once the venues can open again, there will be a gap of time between promoters booking and when the show will actually perform. So some homegrown ideas from citizens may be a way to help bridge that gap. In closing, I'd like to thank management and staff at the civic center for all their assistance during the project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if any.
Mr. Holloway?
Mr. Hitchens?
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be an audit of how much COVID money is actually going to be flowing into the civic center through various forms? I know they're using, using it for vaccinations right now. Will we be reimbursed for that, plus other operating expenses? Will you be doing an audit on that?
I mean, I can certainly put that into a project as part of the budget. The COVID events and events that are taking place right now, as far as using it as vaccinations, like we're outside of the scope of this project, but it can certainly be a part of the budget analysis, which is coming up.
I think that would be wise, because, you know, we do, we do fund the civic center in some ways, so.
Any more questions?
No, I'd just like to thank Mr. Hitchens for this. I know more about the operations of the civic center than I've ever known before. It was very thorough, down to, down to the minute detail. And your recommendations, I appreciated your recommendations as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? I do want to say that I haven't been to a concert in probably two years there, and the last year was mainly because of COVID. So I'm looking forward to things changing and filling that civic center back up. All right. All in favor, Resolution Number 24-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 24-2021 pass unanimously. This time we have public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to the council members. Please include 10 copies. Derogatory comments, personal attacks, obscene language, and disruptive behavior such as shouting, stamping feet, and booing will not be permitted. Do we have any public comments?
That cuts me out.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Tim Spindler. I wasn't going to say anything. I've been coming the last few meetings here on Tuesday night, but in light of the topic of sewer and wastewater, it's more of a question than a comment, maybe, maybe a little both. Over the last six years, my wife and, and I have been traveling the country in an RV full-time. Done about 40,000 miles crisscrossing the country. We came back roughly, I don't know, it's been about three, four months ago. Bought a piece of property in District 2, I believe. That's where it is, Tyusken area. And when I bought the property, it had a old trailer on there. It had septic, it had water, and it had electric. Going through the process, I talked to zoning, I talked to building, I talked to environmental health. I got things in writing from building and zoning, but not from environmental health. Thought I could go ahead and replace the single wide that was on the property and tie into the existing septic. Because everything has been backed up, it took about three months to actually get my application, that I thought was just going to be for a site review. Come and find out when they finally came out, because various different things, I was told, because the property wasn't lived in for three years, because also there wasn't two acres, I wasn't able to pull in a single wide, tie into the current system. I guess it's two-part. It's, it's part environmental health, it's part zoning. The environmental health piece, I recognize is going to be a long-term solution. I know that, that is the case, especially out in that area. I know the water tables are high. I know the ditch systems are not what they should be to drain the water off the property. So I appreciate, and I hope that you guys continue to work diligently, especially in those regions, in District 2 and, and out in the east side as well, in the rural ag areas. But my other question is, is as I've traveled, or other statement slash question, as I've traveled across the country, I've noticed that zoning laws are different, land use is different. You have some areas where you're allowed to have RV/tiny homes on properties. Some are deemed recreational, so you can only have them for a period of time. Six months has been the average. Others have been a lot more lenient or a lot more stringent on that. And so my question slash hope is that while we're trying to figure out how to deal with wastewater and how to deal with, with the well systems and such, especially in the rural ag districts, is it possible, and if not, why not, to loosen up the zoning side of things, to allow people that are private property owners to park an RV, to park a, a tiny home on their property for at least a period of time so they can use it? So they can, part of the problem is you can't establish income without living in an area. Rent is high. It's expensive, especially if you have kids and a lot of kids, and I won't tell you how many I have, but there are a lot. There has to be ways that we can bridge this reality, this issue of the, the water and septic, and, and therefore the inability for people to reside in the county at any level and in any way. So I don't know if this is a time for the question, if you guys will respond to that, but why is it only seven days out of 90 that an RV can park on someone's own private property? I'm not saying renting it from someone or anything else, your own private property. And why is it 30 days out of a total calendar year that one can do that? And is it something that we could work on until we can get all this figured out? I mean, there's a ton of people that have chosen to live full-time lives in RVs and tiny homes for various different reasons. And I just didn't know in Wycomico County, to bridge that gap, is that something that we can look into and potentially, yeah, bridge the gap? So.
I do have to say, it is something that we can look into, but public comments aren't really set up for debate.
Okay, no problem.
And I appreciate what you're saying, because we are diligently working on the water and sewer. And if you want to leave your name with Ms. Harley before you leave, or even send us an email, because we don't have the answers to the questions that you are asking, or I don't think that everyone here would have the answer. But I do appreciate that, and give us your name, and we'll look into it and get an answer for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
Yes.
There's a lady right there. Evening.
Okay, so, Dr. Bronte, the show, President of NAACP, Wycomico County Branch 7028B, here with concerns, still concerned about the 2A sanctuary that somehow made its way on the agenda, that, not the one that I originally received.
Can you stand closer to the mic?
I really don't prefer to. Can you hear me? Because it hasn't been sanitized.
Well, it has to be recorded, and that's why.
Can you hear me?
We can, but the mic's got to record you.
Yeah, the mic's not picking you up.
Thank you.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. McCain.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so can you hear me now?
I can hear you a little bit, but I'm not sure if the mic can pick you up.
Okay. I don't know if there's a monitor that shows that they can hear.
We don't have it here. They may have it in the back.
Okay. Okay, so as I was saying, the sanctuary, 2, 2A sanctuary topic came up again, which we also dealt with that this summer. And I was a little shocked because it wasn't on the original agenda that Ms. Harley sent me a few days ago. So I just want to share a couple reflections and thoughts as I got that across my computer today, I mean, yesterday. computer today, I mean, yesterday, um, morning. And I want to start with just a quote from George Mason, that he stated at a speech in Virginia Ratifying Convention on June 1788. "There is one thing in which I conceive to be extremely dangerous. Gentlemen may talk of public virtue and confidence. We shall be told that the House of Representatives will consist of the most virtuous men on the continent, and that in their, in their hands, we may trust our deepest rights. This, like all assemblies, will be composed of some bad and some good men, and considering the natural lust of power so inherited, inherited in man, I fear the thirst of power will prevail to oppress the people." And so, you have issued a proclamation and adjustment to an original request, which was for a second to, a Second Amendment to, second, 2A Second Amendment sanctuary. So I'm a little perplexed as to how and why, when this came, be as, that it was not on the original agenda, as I said. If you reflect on this for a moment, as something that was written downtown of years ago, and I got some comments and, and some reflection as I, as I heard this, and it stated, it was printed on the street here downtown. Is it true? Is it fair? Is it beneficial to all concerned? And will it promote the general welfare of all? It's my hope that as you are elected, appointed, voted by the people and for the people, that you kind of ponder and think about those questions as we're moving forward with actions in our communities. We know that we're in a very hypersensitive point right now, not just with COVID, but from all the things that happened this summer with the George Floyd and Breonna Taylors and Ahmaud Aubrey's. So we really want to be cognizant on how we are, what we're signing, what we are promoting, and what synergy that sends to our community. We want to make sure that we are supporting them and also giving them a time of comfort in a time of stress. Um, so that, that's my words of reflection for you all today, and to share with the community, as a voice of the community right now, and my position, and as a citizen of United States of America, and a resident and homeowner of Wacomiko, in Wacomiko County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another public comment?
Thank you. Bruce Robson, resident of Wacomiko County, and, um, uh, I wish Sheriff Lewis had stuck around, um, but, uh, to me, there's, it's almost like building your, your outfield fence in a baseball field higher to prevent a homerun when the other team hasn't hit a homerun in 50 games. It, it seems to me like the intent was twofold here. Number one, to support the Second Amendment, to say we support it. Well, don't we? Is, is there, is there, is there a risk against the Second Amendment? The arguments he gave, to me, said there's not. I, I don't remember the numbers, but 40 million guns sold, 19 million guns sold. When was the last time there was legislation in front of our country at the national level saying we want to rescind the Second Amendment? Does anybody know? Well, I just happened to learn yesterday, when I was looking into coming, 1993, somebody indeed brought that forward. It didn't even get to a vote. Didn't even get to a vote. So what, what, why we need this? Does this mean we don't support the First Amendment as much? We don't support the 14th, or the 12th, or the whatever? Uh, there just seems, in fact, he said, some people think it's unnecessary. To me, it's more than unnecessary, and it's dangerous, and the reason why was the reaction to Mr. McCain's question. Now, I've thought of this beforehand, but I thought Sheriff Lewis, who represents us all, and we hope he is calm, and he has a distinguished record of pub, of serving public safety, et cetera, immediately got very defensive. Okay, now, he's passionate, I'm sort of passionate myself, okay? He's passionate, but he's paid to not get upset, for one thing, to be calm. And as it turns out, he really said that, he did say, when, when on questioning, that this one law he was referring to, which I'm not familiar with, if it had passed, he may not have supported it, he might not have enforced it. That's where this, at the top, gets down to the bottom and gets to be very dangerous. I know there's a movement, I can't tell if it's strong or not, to have the city of Salisbury a 14th Amendment sanctuary. There are over 3,000 counties in this country and 19,000 cities. Is this the United States of America, or are we gonna have our own little place where in this place guns are okay, in this place they're not, in this place the 4th Amendment's not, in this place it's not? Mr. McCain asked a question about, well, if it's a law, until it is, it is, it is challenged in court and struck down, at whatever level it is, it is constitutional. All right? So do we get to choose? He, he quotes the Heller, the Heller decision, big thing for gun rights, right? It struck down, excuse me, it struck down a DC law, all right? And, and it said that somebody does have a right to have a gun in their home. That was the Supreme Court. At the very beginning of that decision, it said this, which I guess probably every Supreme Court decision starts with this, "In interpreting this text," this text meaning the Second Amendment, "it is an interpretation. At this point, it's the law of the land, and I respect it. I might not agree with it, yes or no, I'm not saying I do or don't, but I respect it, and I certainly hope the sheriff of our county does." All right? It's unnecessary, but worse than unnecessary, it goes down the path of bad governance, I think. Are we the United States of America? Or is it what happens in this county, that county, et cetera? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Yep.
You have any more public comments?
Good evening, uh, Mr. President, and council, and citizens of Wacomiko County. My name is Donnie Waters, a concerned citizen of Wacomiko County. And, uh, I do want to get up to address a couple of things. The second, let me get the language right. Proclamation on Second Amendment right to bear arms. Wacomiko County Sheriff Mike Lewis. And I heard you say, President, that anybody can make a proclamation? So maybe we need to come in subsequently after this and start making proclamations about our concern about everybody being treated, as we get up and set a pledge of allegiance under God, first and foremost, with liberty and justice for all, not just for a few. As I watched on January the 6th, after a legal duly election, and the numbers were counted, and the victor had 7 million more votes than the loser, and I did not hear from the ranks of the people of that party saying, "You lost. Here's who the popular vote voted for, and here's who the Electoral College put in office." And the reason why I'm bringing this up, to respond to his question, no, we are not the United States of America. And every time you set that pledge of allegiance, and you don't earnestly hold your obligation to the oath that you've taken to uphold the Constitution, because a real quick civic class is this, the Constitution of the United States, the government of the United States, they charter, and the state of Maryland gets this charter and rights and constitution, constitutional rights from the federal government. And the county of Wacomiko County is chartered and gets this permission and rights from the Constitution of the state of Maryland. The sheriff of Wacomiko County does not have the legal standing to determine whether a law is constitutional or not. That is the job for the courts, and most importantly, the Supreme Court. Read the Constitution. We may not all agree on how things are done, or how it's organized, or how it's conducted, but one of the things I'm really concerned about is integrity in upholding your oath of office, as you say, regardless of party, and how you continue to allow people on the fringe who have been voted down and refused to pop up and then just circumvent the whole system with some random proclamation. And I would tell you, from many members in my community, it doesn't seem like he's a sheriff for all the people in Wacomiko County. I want you to know that I am an avid sportsman. I have weapons. I hunt. I like to shoot, but I, I agree in certain things, and there should be education, and there should be proper communication, but everything should be done just duly and fairly along with, in accordance with the law. And what I'm getting out of all of this is if I don't like it, I'll circumvent the law. I saw it on January the 6th, and I watched what happened here tonight, and I heard all the cheers, and I heard the response to, uh, Councilman King's, uh, comment. So I'm, I'm asking all of you individuals who sit around this, as council members, to seriously consider your oath of office and what you pledge to do, and what you pledge to uphold. It comes from the federal government, state government, down to Wacomiko County. You can't just make up your own law randomly. It doesn't work that way.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. You have any more public comments? All right, council comments?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Right on what Mr. Waters says, it's a basic civics class in high school. We, as the county, if any laws is passed through the state, we as the county cannot, cannot override them. We cannot pick and choose, in this county, what laws we want to abide by. If the county, if the state passes a law that we are not agreeing with, you have to go through the state and fight them. We cannot fight that battle, meaning that whether I agree with this Second Amendment right, where we bear arms or not, we do not have a position, and we're not in, do not have the authority to say we want to make Wacomiko a Second Amendment sanctuary because that's what we want. We cannot do that. It's not in our charter. The Attorney General has even sent a ruling down telling us that we do not have that authority to do that. And I'm a former police officer, and we swore in, part of that oath was that you swear to uphold, not only protect the citizen, but uphold and protect the laws of this state. Nowhere in that oath did it say, "I could pick and choose what laws I wanted to enforce." It said you enforce all the laws of the state of Maryland. So you don't have that choice, whether you're a city police officer, county police officer, or state police. Your job is to uphold all of the laws that are presented to you by the state of Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any more comments? Council comments? Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I would simply say that, uh, first, I'd like to thank Sheriff Lewis for the tireless work that he does on risking his life on behalf of all the citizens of Wacomiko County. Uh, you know, whether you're for or against the Second Amendment, I think the one thing you have to understand and have to respect is the fact that, uh, Mike Lewis stood here tonight with a proclamation that he recognized was symbolic. But I think what you have to recognize as well is that Mike Lewis is a man of conviction. He's a man of integrity. He does represent all the citizens of Wacomiko County. I've had hundreds of conversations with him since we were both elected in 2006, and he is a man of integrity. He does, he does have a lot of concern for every citizen in this county, and he does put his life, and would put his life on the line for anyone in this room, or anyone in this, of the 100,000 citizens in the county. So I think we should, we should recognize that. I don't think this is a time where you want to disparage your sheriff. Um, again, he said it was symbolic. He upholds the values of the Constitution, respectively the Second Amendment, and I think that was simply his position tonight, and I respect him for the, the position that he took.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Ms. Ackley?
I just want to say that, as council members, as elected officials at the state, local level, um, we represent the people, and Wacomiko is a very diverse county, and we have diverse representation, and that's healthy. It's healthy to, um, have diversity and to represent the people that have voted you into office. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any more council comments? All right. All right, let me get my glasses. Yeah, Josh, I didn't mean to forget you.
Josh, you're welcome. Uh, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, make sure that, uh, folks remember that there's gonna be, uh, it's open to the public, but there'll be the Septic and Wastewater Town Hall, uh, as we mentioned earlier, uh, this, uh, this Thursday at 4:00. Um, this is put on by the Coast Association of Realtors, and this could be a good, uh, space for information, uh, from, they've, they've done a lot of, um, good work on that in the past, so in case the public wants to attend, it's on, uh, their website, and I, I just put it on my Facebook recalcage page. Uh, and also, the second thing that I wanted to bring up was just that, uh, I do plan on this week speaking, rounding back with our acting, uh, county executive. We still, to this day, do not have a Public Works Director or a Deputy Administrator of the council, for the county. And, uh, I do think that, uh, the, the sooner that we can get someone in place, or get, get individuals in place, uh, the, I think the more efficient and effective we can be. So, uh, I'm mentioning that here and now, but I will be following up with, uh, the Acting County Executive, so to, um, to see if we can, uh, make some progress on that. Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Right, thank you very much. All right, need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the General Provisions Article Section 3 dash 305, B, 1, and A as follows, "To discuss a personnel matter relating to the evaluation of an individual over whom the, this public body has jurisdiction, which will, um, will be held in closed session to protect the confidentiality of the individual. And, uh, 2, to consult with legal counsel on pending litigation to protect the attorney-client privilege." And, uh, right now, we're gonna move on to, um, open work sessions, and number 1, the salary recommendations for the county sheriff position, um, has been asked to be delayed. We also have to talk about, at some point, the, uh, Compensation Review Committee for the council, as well as the county executive, so that's going to be delayed for tonight. So, um, right now, let's move on to number 2, the proposed charter provisions.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, the salary review, don't we have to appoint a committee six months prior to them meeting at the 1st of January?
I think it's the first quarter of the, uh, of the new year before the election.
Yes, the, the last year.
Yeah, but what we're supposed to do is...
Next January.
Yeah, but we have to pick the committee this year.
First quarter of the last year, if I'm not mistaken, January, January of next year.
They meet then, but yeah, but I think Mr. Davis is correct, is, we appoint them... In June? Somewhere around mid of this year. Yeah.
So they have to submit their recommendation within the first 15 days of the, the fourth, beginning of the fourth term, or the fourth year of the term. Um, I, to my knowledge, the charter is silent as to when you actually make the appointment, but they have to have sufficient time to do the, the work. Yes.
Again, I think, to answer your question, uh, Councilman Davis, I believe, as I understand it, would be January of, uh, in a year from now.
Right, but that, that's when they make us the recommendation.
That's when they send us the recommendation.
That's when we appoint the committee.
So, so the charter specifically says, "The county council shall establish by law a commission empowered to recommend to the county council compensation allowances to be paid to the members of the county council and county executive. When established, the commission shall set the compensation allowances within 15 days after the beginning of the fourth year of the term of each council." So it doesn't actually say when that, they have to be established, but obviously you do want to allow time for them to do the work.
So we basically have to have them appointed by the first meeting in January of, of next year?
I would recommend we appoint them before then.
Before then, yes. But they have to be in position.
Yeah, I've served on that commission twice before.
Yeah.
And normally, we meet, if I remember correctly, it's kind of like in the fall, because we have to make that recommendation in, in the beginning of... January. That final year.
And, and we will do that, that is the plan.
Yeah.
Uh, my plan was to do the sheriff separate. We really don't have to do the sheriffs by, um, by charter. Um, but I wanted to do the council and the executive separate, didn't want us to be tied in with the, his discussion. So, um, any more questions on that? Ms. Hurley, do you have anything on that? Okay, thank you. I was trying to read it on my phone there, but, all right, um, moving on to the proposed charter provisions for discussion with the Charter Review Committee. Do we have any discussion on that? We have a list that we can submit to the Charter Review Committee.
I think there were some other decisions we need...
I think there are some other decisions we need to make, too. I think Laura, Mrs. Hurley, has a list of some other things that we need to make decisions on.
Are you referring to the recommendation list?
No, I'm talking about whether we're going to, who picks, who picks the chairman? Are we going to do a pledge, those items?
I've developed a list of recommendations that we can discuss with the Charter Review Committee. As Joe mentioned, you know, we talked about having a pledge, so that's something that they... That was done for the Frederick County Charter Review Committee. Need to discuss, we also need to discuss, you know, the chairman and vice chairman of the committee.
We've discussed that. We talked about the chairman, we, in the consensus was the committee picks the, the chair and the vice chair.
That is correct.
I know.
My, my list of recommendations would be for, for the commission to consider. I mean, these are, it's just a list I developed that, hey, you may want to think about these things.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about us.
No.
You're talking about, you're talking about the commission making that?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so do they each have the list of the recommendations in front of them?
They do not, I didn't bring that list, I didn't know we were going to be talking about that tonight.
Okay, but we do have the proposed charter amendments. Mr. Holloway, did you have any more discussion on that list?
No.
Okay, so you should have in front of you the proposed charter amendments. The thought was to give that to the committee as a guideline for reference if they wanted to. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, personally, I mean, I think it's, we got 32 items on there, so I think it's going to keep them pretty busy, plus, you know, they can come up with all their own other items and so forth, so that's a, yeah, that's a lot to digest. That's a plenty for them, certainly as a starting guide, that's a...
So you're okay with that? You're okay with that, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
I suppose so, yes.
You suppose so, I guess. Mr. Cannon?
Oh, I'd only add a 33rd one, you have to know that's going to happen. In light of the fact of discussion that we've had in reference to the sheriff's salary, that should also be probably an amendment that we put in the charter, because for so many years, they thought that the commission's responsibility was to choose, was to make a decision, a recommendation on the executive, the sheriff, and the council. Charter's only for the council and the executive, so I think we should add the sheriff as an elected official, so that it becomes more in line with state law. So I would, I would recommend the 33rd one that aligns us with...
The council does make the recommendation for the salary.
But this, this would also, the commission, for the commission to make the recommendation to us.
So you want to add that?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, and also, I don't, I'm looking at this, I don't know if it's on here, so correct me if it is, but I know we've discussed in the past, too, changing the timing of it.
I think that's in here.
Is that in there, Ms. Hurley?
It is in there, but Mr. Taylor did submit a memo, basically indicating that the way the charter is currently written follows state law, so that may be something we cannot change.
We'll at least look into it and...
Yes.
Because the unfortunate thing about the timing is, we're, it's always in that last year, and people are declaring, you know, who's running for office at the, almost simultaneously when we're deciding compensation.
Right, and it's not fair to the council member that decides whether they're going to run or not, although it, it's not saying that you're increasing your salary or decreasing your salary, because you can decrease it. It's saying it's for the next term, so you don't know who's going to get elected the next term, so that was some discussion. Being that it's in the last year, it turns out to be a problem in many cases. Mr. Holloway?
Being we're talking about adding one, let's talk about maybe taking one off. Number 30, the censure of council members. We had a discussion about that earlier, not understanding exactly what that meant. Instead of sending that to the committee, I think we should either remove it or have a better definition. Does anybody really know what, what that means, and what the ramifications are if somebody is censored?
Censorred or censured?
Well, there we go, see? It was a question.
We need Mr. Taylor here.
Is everybody okay with scratching that?
I just think that's a question, you know, the council can do a vote of no confidence...
That's correct.
...on any other council member or any other elected official in Wacomiko County, which basically would serve as the same thing as censoring some, if that's what that means.
Do we have that process in place in this county? In any of our policies or procedures or charter?
Of doing a...
A vote of no confidence?
No confidence. I think it's been done, I don't think it's in, in the...
I don't think it's ever been done.
I know we've discussed it. Mr. Wilber, do you recall?
I'm not aware of a procedure for a vote of no confidence.
Yeah, the reason, and I'm the one that, that suggested the censure, the reason I did that is because I, I am so concerned of the fact that, and, you know, Bob Taylor has mentioned the fact that there's not even any restrictions we can impose on a closed session, and for the most part, from the last email I read, he was suggesting that you could not even, you know, hold council members to confidentiality in a closed session. I don't know, it's still, yeah, right, it still has to be, I think that theory has to be tested.
Yeah.
Point being, is that I really, I really feel uncomfortable sometimes in a closed session, if I feel that what I may say, because the reason it's a closed session, because a lot of times it's personnel matters, and we have to make some serious decisions or comments in reference to personnel issues, and those are comments that I don't think any of the other council members would want shared with that individual or with any others. And this sort of puts some type of a guarantee for the council members that what they say in confidence will remain in confidence. So I say we, we leave it there, we let the, you know, present it to the commission as such, and let them decide what they think, that there should be a better balance.
That's fine, but I think they should also be taxed with what the ramifications are if they're censored, so...
Yes, never went that far, we could include there as well that that's part of what their charge might be, right? That's what you're suggesting, that they also...
Well, you know, it's just a, it's just a question, and I think, I think they're going to come back to us and say, okay, so we pass this, what are, what are, how are we going to punish somebody for doing that?
Okay.
And do they have to go to court to be proved that they've done something wrong first, or is it just something that we arbitrarily come up with? You know, as far as we find people guilty of doing that.
Well, the process is no different than what you suggested on a vote of no confidence.
It sounds like nothing will happen.
We can elaborate on this a little bit if you want to, I mean, I can...
And I think that's a good point. Maybe we should have both terms in there, censorer and censurer, and then what the ramifications will be. So if, if anybody has any ideas?
Well, maybe if we went to legal counsel and asked them for a, a better clarification of how we may present.
I think in the past, if I recall, there's been some times when information has been leaked from the closed meetings, and we're not supposed to be doing that, and, but again, it's hard to prove who did it. But I, I do get your point, so are we going to leave that on there or not?
I mean, I'm fine with leaving it on there, I just think it needs to either come off or be more defined.
I think it needs to be more defined.
I'll talk to Mrs. Hurley, and maybe Mr. Wilber could help us with that, sure. And, and again, then it's still going to go to the commission, they're, they're the ones that are going to make the final decision on how they...
That's right.
We make the final decision. It all comes back to the county.
To give to us. Any more comments on that? So are we good? Ms. Ackley, are you good sending these? All right, Ms. Hurley, they have a consensus. And next on the agenda, we have a...
Just Councilman Hastings.
He was nodding his head.
I don't mean to forget you, you're just up on that screen. Did you have a comment, Mr. Hastings?
No, I just say as a whole, I, as much as we can leave up to the, to the count, to the group itself, I think that's, that's good, so I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hastings. Any more comments before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Letter of support for grant funding to renovate the White Haven Church. Ms. Ackley, this is your district, can you lead this discussion?
This is requesting a letter of support for grant funding to, to have repairs of the schoolhouse at White Haven. Ms. Nancy Robinson is here, she submits the grants for White Haven.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments on this?
It's a great program, and I, I think we should certainly, certainly get this out as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think everyone, I think's in support of this, so...
Mr. Davis, you in support?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings? I didn't forget you, okay. Chair votes, well, no vote, chair supports, so we can move on with the letter for that grant funding. Moving on to number four, letter of support to Senate Bill 620, income tax subtraction modification for volunteer fire and rescue and emergency medical services members. Ms. Hurley, do you have information on that?
The county council received a, or actually, I received a email from Senator Addie Ecker's office wanting to know the county's position on Senate Bill 620. This bill is actually modifying the points system to allow volunteer fire, rescue, and emergency medical service members to receive a tax credit. They currently receive a tax credit now, but this bill modifies the points system, so that way it takes into account the number of days organizations cease operations due to a public health emergency, and that just makes it easier for them to get the points that they need in order to get the tax credit.
Did it say how long this would go on? Because I, I think this is in light of COVID, isn't it?
It's as a result of COVID.
Because they're not able to make their, their points for fires, their points for training, or their points for meetings?
It says it applies to tax year 2021 and beyond.
And beyond, so this will be forever, okay.
One thing I do want to make clear, the guys are still showing up for ambulance calls and fires. There's not been as much training or as much activity at the fire departments because of the COVID-19, but the, the volunteers are showing up and answering calls as needed, so we're not suffering from any lack of service there.
Right, and to keep in mind, this tax incentive isn't much, but it's, it helps the volunteers, and it's one thing that keeps them going, so I, I can support it. Mr. McCain?
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ackley? And Mr. Cannon? Okay, you have a letter of support? All right, and then we had that other bill, Ms. Hurley?
So what you have on your table is the addition to the agenda, this is a letter of support to an amendment, and, so amendment two, it's going to be House Bill 795, that has been cross filed in the Senate as well. My understanding, if you remember, council had written a letter of support for the sale of alcohol beverages on a Sunday. It's my understanding that that bill was late in getting drafted, so the recommendation has been to add that change to the alcohol laws to the golf course license bill that council also wrote a letter of support on.
Okay. So it's going to be added on as an amendment. Does everybody agree to this? We agreed to the original bill. Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Mr. McCain?
I'm a lukewarm, yes. But it just, it just came to us so late, you know?
Right, it did, and...
It looks fine on the surface, I just haven't had a chance to digest it.
Came to us today, and that's what happens in Annapolis. Ms. Ackley?
Can we get a copy of the bills that's written? I mean, I'm fine with it, I would just like to see...
I thought it was right in front of you.
It is.
It's attached to the email.
So you are fine with it? Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hurley? And Mr. Hastings, I see that big thumb up, thank you. Any more comments on this? Ms. Hurley, do you have anything else before we move to closed session?
I do not.
Okay, need motion to move to closed session.
So move.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.